All right, it is 5:30 according to my iPad, so I'm going to call the meeting to order, please. I invite all those willing and able to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was awesome with all those.
Yeah.
That was awesome.
Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals, thank you, Mrs. Wies. And there are some additions, so all those in favor of approving the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Jeff, did you want to mention?
Our work session, instead of it being listed as 6 o'clock, will immediately follow this meeting.
Okay, thank you, just in case we go beyond 6:00.
Yep.
In the future, when we have work sessions, we'll make sure that we just put "to immediately follow" if we're doing that, so don't have any issues.
All right, thank you. Visitors.
Tennis team.
Woo! Yay! Oh, it's great pledges. So who's the voice?
I brought them with just to show that we have a few that are playing tennis, so, and I've been out to the tennis courts and they're coming along. They're coming along. Okay, I don't think they want to see me out there because I keep asking them questions about how they're laying this asphalt now, and they're going to, they're going to, they're going to lay it in different seams, so that's going to be good too, so, yeah. And so we got to wait a few more days after it gets laid, and then I think they'll put the top surface on, and it looks like they're coming along. And that's why we're here tonight, just to say thank you to the board and thank Mr. Enerson for getting all this underway and getting started for the program, and I won't have to stay out so many late nights coming home with these girls, so that'll be another nice thing, so, okay, thanks.
So, on behalf of the girls, we would just like to thank the school board and Mr. Enerson for your hard work for getting us to tennis courts. It is greatly appreciated, and we will use them plenty.
We got you a card or a poster.
Oh, that was sweet.
Very nice.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
And good luck to you.
Yeah. Great season.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, ladies.
We're hoping to get one match out in this fall, if we can get a home section match. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Have a good season.
Thanks, ladies.
This is awesome.
This is really cool.
There you go. And maybe we should put it like right down there or something.
Girls, it's great.
Yeah. It's great, that's great. There you go.
Any other visitors?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Moving on to number five, the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like pulled out? We have 5.1 all the way through 5.9. So 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, and 5.51, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and then 5.6, 5.7, 5.8, 5.9. So are there any of those items that anyone would like pulled out separately to visit about? No? Okay.
No, I don't.
I'm good? All right, so hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Botts, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Taubert. Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to number six, administrative reports and information, 6.11. Jackie.
Oh, shoot.
You're okay.
I really don't have anything. How's that? I don't, I didn't know if I'd be here today because 2017 begins to be a terrible month. I haven't closed the books yet, so at the September board meeting, I'll have 2018 budget here today. The auditors are scheduled to come October 9th, 10th, and 11th, so either the audit report will be presented hopefully in November, but maybe this summer.
Okay, thank you. So probably no questions for Jackie then, huh? All right, 6.1.2, Mr. Strasser.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
First thing is summer school wrap-up. I just want you to know that we had a very successful summer school. We had roughly 20 students attend, and between the days and the minutes that we're required to track our students, this was probably the best in terms of overall attendance and achievement. Majority of them earned their credits, so very, very pleased with our summer school, and we're in the process of getting those approved through to alternative learning center that we work with so that we can put those on student transfers. So that's our summer school wrap-up. We've got our in-service this week, and we spent a very busy day with teachers and had a couple more busy days working with them, getting all the preparations needed for the school year. On, a week ago on Monday, we hosted a back-to-school night, and that was a very heavy emphasis on activities, and we tried something new where we have had kids come and get the pictures taken, and today, Daphne told me we had like 540-some kids actually come and take their pictures. We have about 660, something like. So I thought that was phenomenal, very good turnout, and Mr. Anderson did the activities mandatory meeting. I did a ninth-grade orientation. So there's a lot of things going on that night, so very good turnout. In addition, we want to have an orientation this Wednesday night. The purpose of that orientation is it's hard to get everything done in one night, so we've got an opportunity for parents and students who maybe weren't able to make it last Monday, that, and who also want to learn a little bit more from their teachers. So we've set up some specific times that they can come and meet with grade-level teams in the middle school, and then the high school's a little more open, although the college-level courses, the PSCEO, we wanted to have some specific meetings just because that's a little different level, and we want to be a little more clear as to how that process works. So we've got those in place for Wednesday night. If you look at tomorrow night, we've got our fifth-grade orientation, so we're covering a lot of bases that we haven't really done before. So excited to see how those go. And then, as you can see, as you look at the agenda tonight, there are a lot, a lot of new hires, so we've been working hard at hiring parent professionals and filling, filling those positions that are necessary to work with our students. And those are things I have. Unless you have questions regarding...
I guess I've had a lot of concerns about the scheduling of a lot of these things. A lot of, especially the second session coming up Wednesday was not very well-publicized. Even me myself did not realize this till Sunday on Facebook. So I mean, going forward, I think we really, especially when we're changing things, we really need to make sure we're communicating with parents about when things are going to be done and where, when they have to be, where they have to be. Just due to its job schedules, things like that. I just, I know it was kind of, I feel like it wasn't very publicized or to let you know where your kids are supposed to be. And then, as far as elementary too, I think, I feel like next year we should try to get those out a little sooner because those two were kind of, you know, it was like only gave you two weeks to kind of get your stuff together to figure out when you had to be there. And that's a change. It'd be different if it was next year and they're, they're ready for that, but where it was a change, I think it caught a lot of people off-guard.
Yeah, and we did a lot this year.
It was great. I thought the first night was great.
Yeah, and we weren't sure how that was going to go.
Yeah, I thought it was great.
So that turned out really well. But on the other hand, we did want to, we had in mind we were going to do something on Wednesday. And it's hard to plan staff-specific things when the staff isn't around for three months. So that's part of the issue. We'll have a much clearer picture of how we're going to do things, and looking forward into next year. So I understand it doesn't always fit people's schedules. Then again, they don't have to come, it's not a required thing. It's, it's a nice thing, and we hope that they can, but...
Right. I just think a lot of people want to come, they just want to be better informed, is what I would say. I never heard anyone complain about what, I mean, they thought it was a great deal. You know, they, they thought the pictures are great. I, as a parent, thought it was good. Maybe a little, maybe have a checklist to the things that we have to do while you're here, just because there was confusion about Chromebooks and those type of things. So I was confused about whether I'm supposed to pick it up, or, you know, that type of thing, but otherwise, you know, I just think just getting the information out there would be good.
Well, and I think that's the thing too, when you start something new, the first charity, you know, those things don't work out the best. And as far as our elementary, we would have gotten them out sooner, but we've had some changes with our admin assistants and had to do some, you know, figuring some things out. And we also tried to get them out the first week and got them out the second week, but on the first hand, on the other hand, if you hand them out too early, they get lost and they don't have the link where they need to, you know, connect. And that's how they're signing up for their conferences or calling the school. So I, there's that kind of little, you know, where is that, that good spot to send those things? Because of the fact that, okay, we send them right at the beginning of August, and then they can't find it. Now we have all these people calling and trying to schedule instead of just going to the link and scheduling. So that was a little bit of a part of that as well. But now that we've done it, we can just look forward to it for next year, and they'll know that that's...
Right, and, yeah. Yeah, I think it'll only get better. I think it's...
Right.
Do we have any positions left? To hire? I mean, I know I'm one that has asked that, you know, numerous times. Just because I've, I've been asked by a few different people, do we have all of our? I'm not quite sure where we're sitting, you know? But I said, I know we're approving, you know, more positions, but...
From a teaching, excuse me, from a teaching staff standpoint, our last position was our ELL position up here, and we hired Stacy Wallace to teach in that capacity. And while it's not a language, or it's not a ELL-specific, she has a language arts background, and we're heavily emphasizing reading instruction, which is kind of the foundation we want to build with our Yale students. And, yeah. That was our last position.
Okay, okay. Very good.
I think parents and teachers are now...
We're close on. Parent professionals are a little more challenging because our teachers are doing a lot of scheduling this week. They've started the process, but now, as we get new students in, we always may have to hire additional parent professionals based on student ID piece. So yeah, we're, that's kind of a continual.
Yep.
And I think we're close, but I don't want to overstaff. I try to be right there, and we've done a lot of talking about needs of elementary needs up here and how to really get our staff accurate based on...
Thank you, Cory. Any other questions for Mr. Strasser? Okay, 6.1.3, Ms. Barman.
Really just been working on getting things in order for our back-to-school conferences day on Wednesday. We will be having pictures, and the clinic will be there, and they'll be offering food shots as well. We will have the rec center there, we will have, I don't know, vision and hearing, and we will have a checklist on our, it's already ready, our parent folders that we'll be handing out, and we have highlighted what's required, and then highlighted that what's optional. So I'm crossing my fingers that everything goes well. We got translators for those who need it, so we hired a couple translators to come in and help with our Spanish-speaking families. We'll have three at Brown because we're very heavy Hispanic at Brown as far as Spanish-speaking families, and then one up at Hill. Other than that, Jackie and I finished the Title I grant today. We got two and three left, and we're going to finish that tomorrow, and I'm super excited about that. What's really exciting is, I'm excited to be done, and not excited yet. The exciting thing about Title III is that we've never got Title III funds before, and Title III funds is for our ELL population, so that's exciting, that we're going to get somewhere funding for our ELL students. So I'm pretty pumped about that. So other than that, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions? No, Ms. Barman?
I like the checklist.
Yeah, I like it. Thank you, Ms. Barman, 6.1.4.
Hello.
Hi.
I promise I won't take too long. I cut out many slides to... I want to give you an overall picture, more than just a gloss over, since a little bit of an in-depth picture of where we're at with our RMC data at the end of last school year to start this school year. And just reminding ourselves, really, the world's best workforce is what makes Minnesota Minnesota and has really set Minnesota up for good planning for the Every Student Succeeds Act, succeeds act. So having our kids proficient, making sure that they're making growth, closing our achievement gaps, and working at graduation are a few of the things that Minnesota really thinks are important. Our district demographics, I just kept it as the district overall. You can see our Hispanic population overall is at 14%. This is from the Minnesota report card that anyone can go and access and see. And that data is from October 1 last year, so it doesn't, they update the scores and all, but they don't necessarily always update the demographic information at that same time. So when October 1 rolls around, it'll be a more accurate look at what this school year is. And then I broke it down into elementary. You can see, you know, that's where Hispanic population really rises, and our free and reduced rises as well there. Secondary, and you'll notice that the parentheses behind the percentage is the actual number of students. You don't like to put a percentage without the actual number because percentages can mean many things based upon what the number actually is. Did you guys take a look at that? Getting into reading, our district reading proficiency for 2017 is 54.1%. I spoke with our whole staff this morning and asked 72 staff members to stand up because that's the number of students who are not proficient. In, when, when I took the 156 staff who were going to be at our presentation this morning and took the percentage of students who are not proficient, that's the number of staff members that would reflect that, that percentage. And asked our staff what they would do if they were looking at that within their team, a deficiency like that. I'm more worried about those who are not proficient. I like to put up what the proficiency is, but my job is to get that number to be higher and to work with staff to incorporate strategies, implement standards, and help them grow as professionals and help grow our students' academics. So when we look at our district proficiency trends, I'm sorry, it's a little smaller. On the big screen, it's very large. But if you look at the left-hand side, you can tell our reading proficiency as a district has pretty much been flatlined from, I believe, 2013, yeah, that's the number on there, to 2017. Then it shows our proficiency on the right-hand side where, you know, the number of students who are proficient versus who are not is not too much different, you know, when you have 54% proficient. Then I broke it down by the number of students each year that are proficient, and you can see that this year we have that 330 who are proficient. Now, maintenance of proficiency is a special beast. It looks at 2016's score and whether the students were proficient then, and then if they were, they remained proficient in 2017 or not. And so if we look at the left-hand column where the Y is at, that shows us that of those, and I put some writing at the bottom in the standard reader here, it says, of the 212 students who were proficient in 2016, 175 remained proficient, but 37 dropped to not proficient. So when you look at the two years difference, we had dropage. Of the 206 students who were not proficient in 2016, 147 remained not proficient, and 59 became proficient. So I like it when that number is higher than the previous number because it shows that, you know, we did make a lot of gains in reading. I don't want to sound all doom and gloom about reading because we're not all doom and gloom, but we made gains, but we have a lot more gains to make. Free and reduced population, I pull that out. So if you look at the red boxed numbers and then the circle of the students who were proficient, who were also flagged as free and reduced, in 2016, 60 remained proficient and 18 dropped to not proficient. And then of the students flagged as free and reduced who were not proficient in 2016, I need better glasses so that screen can see it there. 90 remained not proficient and 29 became proficient. So our free and reduced population doesn't grow as fast as our regular population, and because our percentage, especially in the elementary, is, is large and also it's hanging around 60%, it's important for us to think about school-wide activities, strategies, something that every classroom would do so that when kids move up a grade, it's not something new. It's a strategy that they can take with them. Hill, this is the only elementary that has proficiency trends just because that's where our testing is at. Brown doesn't have any testing. Testing starts in third grade. We do see the hockey puck going up. We've made some nice gains in reading, especially in our elementary. Our middle school, it looks like it's flatlined. In reality, it kind of goes down, just a titch. But I'm excited to work with the middle school staff as well just to bring in some strategies that they can, can try and implement. And I'm excited to get into the middle school classrooms. I've only, in my previous life, was just at Hill or Brown. And so to be able to get into our classrooms and actually see what's going on and gather some data to, so I'm not making assumptions that I'm just looking at these numbers according to these tests, I can pull in some actual perception data and real data to help make some positive change. High school proficiency, we are also flatlining. We didn't make too many gains in comparison to last year. And then our district overall, free and reduced versus non-free and reduced. Here, the, the Y that has the red circle shows those who are marked as being free and reduced, and it shows that those, that 165 who are not proficient were free and reduced and 118 who are. So, but when you look at the non, the students who are not flagged as free and reduced, it's the complete opposite. So we have some work to do, and because we cannot target who free and reduced students are, that's why the school-wide strategies become very important. Achievement levels, this is for the MC reading test. So it goes from the left to the right, does not meet, partially meets, meets, and exceeds. I always think, oh, yeah, the meets is awesome to be sticking up that high, but technically you need to add together the does-not-meets and partially-meets because those two categories create your does, your not-proficient students. So yeah, we have a lot of kids in the meets, but it, the does-not-meet and partially-meet outweighs the meets. When we look at our elementary achievement levels, our fourth grade had some awesome achievement levels this past school year. Third grade had a little bit of variability especially, but in that free and reduced, fourth grade, it didn't matter if they were free and reduced or not, they all grew. And that's what was very refreshing to see. Secondary, I know it's very teeny and hard to see, but the, the red box again is that free and reduced, and the darker color is the meets. So our fifth graders had a lot of, of growth in the meets area. But when we look at, you know, how in seventh grade, all three of the colors are equal that are provided there, and there are no exceeds. And there are also no exceeds in eighth grade. It just shows room for improvement. Making expected growth. Now, I have to caution you about expected growth. That is kind of the bare minimum. That means you're about average. And if you only ever, as a student in third grade through eighth grade and then 10th grade in reading, if you only ever make expected growth, by the time you get to 10th grade, you will not be proficient. So you need to make high growth. And our students are having a hard time making their expected growth. So making high growth, and here's just the, and it doesn't matter if they're free and reduced or not. It's all of our students who are not making their growth in reading. So MDE provides high, medium, and low growth. And in my former life, we added very low growth, so we took the low and subdivided it. And so if you think of a bell curve, and the top of the bell being, being, you met your, your growth, so being zero, you met your expected growth. If you go to the left, it's minus. So the very low is minus .5 and lower, and low is minus point, between zero and minus .5. So it just shows you some degree that you can really see differences in growth from low to very low. So this is our overall growth for our district. It's either you grow or you don't. Because we have the towers on both ends. You're either making your high growth or you're making very low growth. And that middle area, yep, that's our low and our medium growth, but we have some work to do on really understanding our standards as, as instructors and using best practice to ensure that students are able to achieve at very high levels. And, and to be able to transfer skills from one activity to the next and one classroom to the next and one content to the next. That shows high level of rigor. I don't like to use the word rigor because people get all freaked out about it, but if you want to think of it as being able to use that skill anywhere in any time, that's high level of rigor. When we look at our free and reduced versus our non-free and reduced, granted, the, the outer levels are a little bit higher than the non-free and reduced, but they kind of mirror one another. So again, it's a, growth is a district-wide problem. It is not one student group. So, and this is what I was trying to, to explain. If you just always get your expected score, by the time you get down to 11th grade, you're only at 1140, and that's not proficient. And this is, the example applies to math as well as reading. And this is an example from, with math scores. But if you get to your high growth, you are in, well beyond exceeding your score by the time you're a 11th grader or a 10th grader in reading. So it's, it's where you focus. It's where, where our, where our target is at. That's what we have to adjust. So this is the last slide for reading, and it just shows the 2016 achievement levels, so the exceeds, meets, partially meets, and does-not-meets. But then, within each of those groups, it shows their growth level. So it shows you the kids who are meeting. We have a lot of kids who have very low growth who are meeting. And when you look at our partially-meets and does-not-meets, we have a lot of kids who are making high growth. So we may be kind of conditioning ourselves toward one group of students more than the other, when I see that. So, you know, to make sure that our high kids are getting as much encouragement and, and depth of knowledge instruction as our does-not-meets kids, you know, it, it has to be broad and has to be equal. Getting into math, our district proficiency is 47.3%. 83 staff members had to stand up this morning. We have not spent any time on math as a district at all. I was excited to see an opportunity for me to attend to gather some more information about what I, how I can help the math, our math team, school-wide, just today in the email. Our math proficiency as a district has really flatlined since 2013, and the number of students who do not meet, you, you saw that proficiency area. When we get down to the numbers, we only have 266 students who are proficient in math, grades three through 11. Granted, ninth and 10th grade don't take math tests. They, you know, it stops there, goes back to 11th grade. Maintenance of proficiency here, they are maintaining their proficiency in math. 172 students who were proficient... One hundred and seventy-two students who were proficient in 2016 remained such in 2017 and thirty-four became not proficient. Um, one hundred and eighty students who weren't proficient remain profi, or who were not proficient remained not proficient. That number bothers me. To stay not proficient. So, um, looking at our free and reduced, if you look at the number of students who, so the lighter colored green is the not proficient. And so, of the students who were proficient and who were free and reduced, we had fifty-one who, who remained, seventeen who fell. But of those students who are not proficient and were free and reduced, one hundred and seventeen stayed there and then not proficient. So, there's that, I mean, just looking at that makes me, you know, want our district to explore, we have reading corps, there's also math corps. You know, what, what can we do that we can get in and get down and, you know, get right to some students getting skills in math? Something just to stick away for our future thoughts. Um, if we look at our elementary proficiency trends, they, they slightly go up, but they're pretty much there in the same spot. Middle school, um, my line doesn't look as jagged as Mr. Enerson's line did. Um, and, and that's okay. I, we just have different numbers. But you can tell it kind of goes up and it goes down, but it just wavers a little bit here and there. They, they go back and forth year to year. High school, they were doing okay in 2015, they, they made some gains and then they, they've gone down. So, and that's just the eleventh grade. When you think high school, that's the only grade that takes the math. Um, free and reduced, overall, again, um, if we look at the proficiency data, we have, um, a lot more free and reduced who are not proficient in math than who, than those who are not free and reduced being not proficient. Almost sixty-nine, seventy students if I round up. Um, our achievement levels in math are a little bit different than reading. We have some in all areas, so it's not the haves and the have-nots. It's just that we have more in the partially meets and the does-not-meets in math. Um, and we look at our free and reduced in our elementary, you can see that third and fourth grade, um, have a variety of achievement levels of those who are free and reduced. But when you look at the non-free and reduced kids, most of those kids are at meets. And with the secondary, I know this one is very tough to read, um, but the secondary, if you look at fifth grade all the way on the left-hand side, um, many, most students are does-not-meet or partially-meets. And then when you look at the non-free and reduced, most of them are meets. So, we're showing some discrepancies with our free and reduced population, especially at that middle school level. Making expected growth, um, we have the two hundred and forty who did not make expected growth in math and one hundred and seventy-two who did. But again, we don't want to put our flag on expected growth, we want to be at high growth. The free and reduced, um, versus the non-free and reduced, one hundred and eighteen did not make their expected growth versus the seventy-six who did and who are free and reduced. But then if you look at the non-free and reduced, one hundred and twenty-two didn't make their expected growth and ninety-six did. You know, so it's close to fifty-fifty in the non-free and reduced who aren't making their growth. That's just a reminder of our growth levels. District growth levels for math, I already had this slide, I guess I did. Hold on. Nope, she, oh, sorry. Two presentations in one day with all difference. Which one am I talking about? It's okay, it's good. So, we have that one hundred and forty-seven overall who are making very low growth in math, which is outweighing all other growth levels. Um, when we add that one hundred and forty-seven, one hundred and eighty-five, that completely, I mean, immediately outweighs the, the medium growth, um, and the high growth. So, lots to think about. When we look at the free and reduced versus the non, they're not too different, like they're, they're not stark differences, there's a little bit of change here and there between the growth levels. But again, it's a school-wide issue. Here is the visual where it takes each of the achievement levels and adds in their growth levels from last year. And when we look at our exceeds, we have some in all ranges. It's tough sometimes, you know, when, when you're at an exceeds to grow a whole bunch either way. So, that's something I have to keep in mind with the exceeds when you're looking at the growth level. But then when you look at the meets, we have a lot of kids, most of the kids, the highest level of the kids making very low growth. And the same thing with partially meets and the same thing with does-not-meets. So, if we would take this slide and compare it to reading slide, remember, reading had a lot of kids making high growth in the partial and does-not-meets. And that's not happening here in math. And that's why I bring up the math corps, because reading corps does target those kids that are impartial and those low growth and those very low growth to help them get to a higher level. Um, we look at our graduation trend. Um, Minnesota has a ninety percent graduation rate goal. Um, you got close last year?
That's nothing.
But I really, you know, I'm hoping that I can work with staff and, and help them engage students' graders so that we can have a hundred percent graduation rate as we move Just one thing about systems. Russell Akerhoff is a gentleman that Proust, you know, Proust is a, a author who writes about data and how to use it within your system. He says, "A system is not the sum of its parts, but rather the product of the interaction of the parts." And, um, I'm an added part to our system. And I'm hoping to interact much greatly, much more closely with, um, for sure, the, the reading, we need to finish up what they started last year and continually improve on that. I told them this morning, the staff, that we're not, we'll, we'll never be done. It is a continually thing, something you have to continually improve upon. And then to really get started with the math teachers and dig into their standards and help them find some tools and strategies that are going to be helpful for their students in their classrooms. So, our system, right now, I, I would love to say our system is going to go, but I also know that, um, implementation takes time and it takes even more time to make it see, to show up, to show up in the data. Um, sometimes when you've implemented something new, your data actually goes down before it goes up. So, um, you know, beware of reading, we're implementing a new reading series. Um, and, and math, you know, I'm, I'm hoping we can see some gains in math this year, like we saw some gains in reading last year. Do you have any questions? I know I talked really fast and went through a lot of slides. I'd be happy to meet with anyone individually to talk through anything. And I can go deeper into individual grade levels and so on and so forth at any time if, if that is something that the board wants.
This is a nice overview, I guess.
Go ahead.
No, I was just saying, it's just a nice overview to just kind of see where, where things have, have gone and surprising to me. I mean, that were that low, something to work on, definitely.
Between 2012 and 2013, was there?
The MCA three.
The new testing standards and?
Yep. And when the standards were really focused on in the assessments. So, it became very clear, you know, hey, we have these standards, perhaps you'd like to incorporate them into what you're doing. Um, I really coached the staff this morning to think of their curriculum as a resource, not as what they do, not like open the book, start at page one, go to chapter one, unit one, so on and so forth, but to rather use your standards to guide your instruction and use your curriculum to support your standards. That's new thinking for some, and that's okay. I would be there to continually coach and bring them to that. You know, what do the standards say? Where, where, what standard are you working on here? They have to keep that in mind. And they have to understand what the level of intended rigor is for those standards. Not just, yep, I did what it said, but what is it, what verbs are, what are the verbs really asking the student to do and how are they asking them to do it? Not just, yep, I did this and can check it off. Standards are not a check-off list. They are, they're in your bible for what you're doing in your classroom, especially in reading and math. And, um, because reading standards have standards in all classrooms, um, they have the, the technical subjects reading does. Um, so last year, that was something new for all of our staff to realize, we are all reading teachers. So, and I'm hoping to help them with some strategies and, and other supports to continue that growth and understanding that they are all reading teachers. Any other questions?
Any other questions for me?
I just wanted to add that, um, you know, when we look at where we're at, um, one thing that Melanie didn't put up is where the state averages are. I gave that, kind of that picture this morning with the staff. In terms of reading, we're about four points below the state average, which is within range of average. I know that our district goal is to be at or above, but in reading, we're really quite close, so I don't want anybody to feel like Pipestone is a bad place to be because we're just about like everybody else around the state. Our math is about ten points lower and we know that that's an area that we need to really get after. And again, that's why, um, as a district, we said we need to dedicate more leadership and more support to our staff, and that's why we hired a curriculum director. So, that's where Melanie comes in. The data that you read is a little sobering and we warned the staff today that, you know, this, this isn't going to be pleasant because you do see some of the disparities that are going on. And again, I think it goes back to, uh, students and the support that we provide and that they get at home. And so, uh, all of this really starts to become a conversation about how do we help all of our students be successful? How do we help all of our teachers be successful? And so, we are looking at a holistic approach to improving our school system. So, uh, it just doesn't happen overnight and I hope that the district and the board can be patient with us over the next few years. But, uh, we did see a little bump in, in reading, but I expect that we will, uh, continue to see some of that positive growth, uh, when we dig more into the standards, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. All right, move into six.
Well, can Melanie add about the mentoring new teachers also?
Yeah.
Because we had that last week.
Okay, sure. Um, we brought, uh, the mentees, so the new staff and the mentors in on Tuesday, um, together. And we started our day, um, getting to know one another. And then we divided and Cory and Tony took the, the new staff and brought them up to speed, took them on a tour, talked to them, talked them through a whole list of, of things. The, the mentors were like, man, I don't even know what they're learning over there yet, you know? So, talking about synergy, the new student, uh, information system and things like that. Um, and then I was on the mentor's side, helping, um, our mentors realize what their role is, remind them, because we had a couple mentors who were mentors last year. I had a few, um, of those mentors come and say, well, I actually learned something more. Good. Because I didn't know what they had learned the previous year, that was, so I, I was glad that I could find and put together a program that was really helpful for them as well having mentored and been trained before. Um, then that afternoon, they, um, went, the mentees went and had lunch with Kuanis and we, um, had lunch with the mentors and just kind of processed how things went, to see if they had any other questions. And then the rest of the afternoon, the two mentors and mentees spent time together in their classrooms, answering any questions, helping them get started, so on and so forth. And then the second day was just the new teachers. And we brought them up to speed on the ELA standards, everything staff had done last year. Got them into the standards, the learning targets, um, looking at, at, uh, depth of knowledge and, you know, I'm excited because we have some, we brought on some very good staff who really already understand the idea of using standards, having learning targets, using them in their instruction, um, just maybe from a different state. So, pretty exciting. It was a good day. Do you guys have anything to add? Good two days.
I thought it was very worthwhile, the time that we spent with, with our teachers, um, both collectively and then separately on that Wednesday afternoon. Was just a nice way to, to really work with, with staff and help them understand, uh, the way to do things and, uh, things to expect. So, yeah, overall, it was, it was fun. And we do have, we do have a variety of staff experience. And it's not just, oh, we're from college, it's, it's nine years, it's four years, it's over here, it's over there. And I think that all plays in well to, to, to help our staff.
And it was fun because, um, they're quite beautiful, so I'm going to be back to Pipestone. So, I'm wearing orange today. Because I was in the first graduating class of Pipestone Jasper. I just kind of kept that and helped me, you know, bolster my, my beliefs today and keep things going, so, yeah. So, we go together like peanut butter and jasmine. So, no, we appreciate being in the team days with the new staff, um, rather than cramming it all into one. Um, that's something that, you know, Cory and Tony said last year was just, just pounded them with all this information and didn't have enough time with their mentors. And so, we're happy to do that.
Good. Thank you. Any questions on that? Anyone have any questions for them?
No, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, all of you, all three of you. School board, six point two, school board members, negotiations committee.
Well, um, we met on, what was it, August? I don't remember the date. Anyway, couple weeks ago, couple weeks ago we met. Um, we're getting closer. We went, went through a lot of language issues that we have on a lot of the contracts. Um, we're still kind of discussing the preschool pay and where, what to base that off of and where we need to be and that, those type of things. Um, I think both sides were kind of supposed to gather information and decide where, what direction we want to go in that. We went through, um, talking about some, as far as the college and the schools classes, as far as how we want to move forward with that by either paying for credits for teachers to be proficient in those areas so that they can teach them, um, or if there would be a stipend or that kind of thing, what the pay, how the pay would be and that type of thing, which I think we're getting closer on and we're both kind of, both working towards the language on that also. Other than that, I think we're pretty close on everything else except for, um, as far as the salary. Um, our last offer was thirteen fifty the first year, thirteen fifty the second year, with five hundred going to insurance each year, which is about a six point three increase. Um, and I think they were, I want to, I wrote this down here, I think they were at fifteen hundred with both years with five hundred insurance. So, we're getting closer, the gaps narrowing, but, um, I think we were going to wait until after school started and the staff was back in the district to meet again, so. It's kind of where we're at. And is there anything else, Jeff, that I missed? I think that was about all we were.
I think that's about it.
A lot of it was just dates and?
September twentieth is our next date, if I recall.
I don't remember. I got it wrote down somewhere.
That sounds right.
Is that right?
That sounds right.
I said, I remember it being after school started always. And it was toward the twentieth.
We wanted to give them a chance to saddle in.
Yep, September twentieth, yes.
And get the school year, year started so that we weren't having to try and negotiate and get up to speed with school and?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Just to give them a time to settle in.
Thanks for all your hard work on that.
Yeah, thanks.
Any questions for anyone? All right, six point three.
Tennis courts are on track. We're within timelines. They were ahead, but that rain that we got here over the last few weeks probably caused them to lose five, six days, so. But, uh, we're still within the timelines of where we wanted to be. Um, and they're laying that asphalt down today and tomorrow, probably finish that Wednesday and then add us to cure for about, uh, twenty-eight days or something like that. And then they'll, well, they'll do whatever, so. We are within a pretty- We are within a pretty, we, we might be able to get some type of section meet like they were maybe hoping at the end of the year, so we'll see. But that does kind of coincide with when tennis season kind of hits the end, so. But everything seems to be in order and going forward well there. ISG was here last Monday, and we talked about their initial review of our facilities. They did not have any dollar amounts with any of these things. But Lance Oy was at the, was at that meeting and we went through there, so. We know that our elementary schools are, they put some numbers on it. Our Hill and Brown are operating at about a hundred and twenty-five percent capacity. That's why we have kids in hallways and don't have enough room for preschools and don't have enough room for all kinds of different positions that we have in our district, so. They're putting some numbers to it, and we will look at it infrastructure-wise. We know that we have some work to do, and so we'll have all of that. And so probably, it's going to take them a while to get all of the financials in place, but probably look at November to December is when we'll start hearing about that. Hopefully, the Facilities Committee will kind of sit down and go through that prior to it coming to the board, so we'll kind of look at where that's all at. I also have, down at the start of school, I think everything is pretty much in order. Things are looking pretty good. The one thing that we're, Hill lockers, there's some, the company that's putting them in, they, they design them to put in where, and how they fit in in our building, so. The goal was is to have them put in this weekend, Labor Day weekend. I'm not sure where that's all in, so.
Last I heard that it's going to be later.
Yeah, they're breaking it to us gently. It's one of those, everything else though is pretty much in, in place. This morning, I think we had a great back-to-school start. I did talk about the state of the district and where we're at. And, you know, financially, the district's in, in good condition. Academically, you know, we know we have some things to work on. We do appreciate the work that the teachers and the staff have put in. Reading, we did see a slight uptick in, in growth, an improvement in proficiency. Math stayed pretty much level. We do have a few areas that were pretty strong, but, you know, we kind of talk in big picture items here, but there are some areas, some, some pockets of positive things, so. It was good to go through that. And then I reviewed with, with the staff the goals that hopefully you approve tonight. We didn't change a whole lot, but we will talk a little bit about them briefly, but we'll just go over them. So I think we're, we're excited. I think we've got good in-service planned here for the next four days. We have a speaker coming tomorrow who will talk about those students that we sometimes struggle with and how we keep our, could it be safe to say, positive intention with them somehow? So I'm, I'm excited for the next few days there, so. And then I also did give them kind of a, more of a, of a overview of the operating levy so that they begin to have a pretty good understanding of what's expected of them. And I will continue to keep the staff informed as far as what those things are. And of course, after tonight's work session, we'll hopefully have some more direction on that, so. That's where I'm at.
Good.
All right.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson? All right, we'll move on to number seven, Old Business. The second reading of Policy six oh one, six oh three, six one two, and six one six.
Maybe I'll just, this is the second reading. I asked for these to be pulled aside so that I could review these with the administrators because a lot of it has to do with the accountability, curriculum, instruction goals, and one specifically dealt with Title One. And in reviewing all of that with the principals and Miss Welmets, we felt all those policies were in order. So after we, everyone's kind of looked at that, I recommend we just go ahead and approve them.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve Policy six oh one, six oh three, six twelve point one, and six sixteen? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Botts, and thank you, Mrs. Pals, for the second. Any other discussion on those? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving six oh one, six oh three, six twelve point one, and six sixteen, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number eight, New Business, eight point one. Approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Do I have a motion to approve that? Or to?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wies. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Tauber. Any other discussion on eight point one?
Just, this is something we have to do every year, and we're a part of the Minnesota State High School League.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the membership into the Minnesota State High School League, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point two, Appointment of Federal Title Representative in Homeless Liaison, Tony Bartman. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Botts, sorry. Any other, any discussion on that? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Ms. Bartman to the Federal Title Representative in Homeless Liaison, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point three, Approve Policy eight oh six Crisis Management Policy.
If I can have a moment.
Yes, am I going too fast for you?
No. You probably are, this is where, we passed the Crisis Management Plan, but we need a Crisis Management Policy. And the policy states all of the things that you need to have in your plan, which we basically already have, but we didn't. And so for some reason, I don't know if Deb was trying to tell me, but I couldn't get it through my head that we needed a policy in the policy manual. And so this is that policy that we have, basically, we've modeled our Crisis Management Plan after this policy, so. I'm only recommending that the, the board have one reading. We just get this in and move forward with it. So just don't want anybody to get confused that we already did this. You approved the plan, this is the policy, which is telling us what we should have in the plan, which we have all of that in the plan. Sorry.
So is there a motion to approve the Policy eight oh six?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wies. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Any discussion on that? Any discussion on Policy eight oh six? Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving Policy eight oh six, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point four, Subteacher Pay Increase.
We, our subpay is a hundred dollars per day for substitute teachers. In reviewing the area prices or what we pay subs or what area schools pay subs, this is the lowest in the area. I recommend that we move it up to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per day. I'm not exactly sure when the last time was that we increased substitute teacher pay. But it is not also the highest, I believe the highest in the area that I saw was a hundred and thirty dollars per day. So I open it up for discussion, but I recommend that we do that, move in that direction.
Okay, so any questions for you? Comments, thoughts?
Twenty-five dollars a day, and I understand we need to increase our subpay. Twenty-five dollars a day is a twenty-five percent increase. I just foresee down the road that this could possibly hinder some of our future negotiations with other bargaining units. I do agree we need to increase it. I'm just not so sure that high of an increase is where we should go right away. I think over, you know, review it every year and possibly do a step increase every year or something. But to me, twenty-five dollars is, is just a huge increase.
What is the average?
Yeah, I was just going to do it on my calculator. I mean, do we figure eight hours that they give? A day?
Seven probably would be more accurate.
Yeah, it's like seventeen eighty-five an hour.
What is the average that people pay in, around?
I want to say it's in the hundred and fifteen dollar range. And again, I'm not sure when, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Botts, is that with negotiations, I don't know, and I should probably have that information of when the last time was that we raised subpay. Any negotiating or bargaining unit that would say, well, you gave them a twenty-five percent raise, I, I would say every one of those bargaining units have had raises over the last ten years. And I don't know the last time with sub we, we did this, so. And I can look that up if you're concerned, or if you want me to look into that a little bit more. I can do that. I just kind of looked at.
Did we not do it on the run, Mercy?
I don't recall.
I don't either.
My, my thought is, it's been the same since I've been here. I'm starting here, so it has been a long time.
Yep.
Exactly. And I would say we're very, we need to be very competitive for substitute teachers. It's very hard to get teachers. It's getting harder to get substitute teachers. And I would advocate for, for, it's hard work.
And I think we want quality subs. I mean, and that's my concern is that some of these subs may be going to other districts within a fifteen, twenty-minute drive to get more money. And those are the ones that we want to come to our district. I mean, not that we don't have fine subs, but I think maybe we could attract a few more our direction. I mean, I don't know. I don't look at that when I look at it hourly. For, you know, for them to have a bachelor's degree, I don't see that as an hourly wage being bad, I guess. I, I don't have a problem with that amount.
I may add too, part of this came from the new system that we're adding, the computerized subcalling system and that whole process, which allows us to tap into a broader, because a lot of schools in southwestern Minnesota and parts of South Dakota probably use ASOP. And when we go in there, a larger pool of subs can see that. And so if we're a little more attractive, that may be something that helps us to get a few more subs for, because I don't have the exact number, but I mean, there's times when we, we're really scrambling to cover. Tony would think she's FIAE teacher because she really does a good job. She does take the shoes off for FIAE.
FIAE for half a day in my heels, it was fun. I wore tennis shoes in my office, though.
But sorry to make light, I, I, but it is one of those that, you know, again, I, I'm putting it out there. I think the board just, it's good for discussion on these types of things. And so hope you would take that into consideration.
Any other comments? Any other discussion? Okay, do I, so motion on this? All right, so do I have a motion to increase the pay, subpay from one hundred to one twenty-five?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Tauber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of increasing the pay, subpay from one hundred to one twenty-five per day, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Got it? Motion carries. Er, yeah, five. How many are there? Four. I was going to say four to one. Okay, motion carries. All right, two, eight point five, two thousand seventeen eighteen goals.
At our work session in July, we talked about the goals for the upcoming year. And you said that, you know, where we were at, let's keep working on them. There are a few things that I added under academic achievement, just to, you know, the goal number one of the district was high academic achievement for each learner. And you heard a lot of information tonight from Miss Welmets about our MCA performance. Our goal is that we want to get to the state average at each grade level or above. And how we're going to do that is align our curriculum and standards, provide professional development to our teachers, ensure that the children in our communities are ready for kindergarten, and implement interventions to ensure that each child reads at grade level by third grade. And I think that, you know, the plans that we have in place all work towards this, and that's been the direction that you've given us. We'd also like to improve our ACT performance to the state average. And we've added the John Baylor Prep, and we've provided some professional development to our teachers in that area. You saw our graduation rate, and we want to look to get everything at a hundred percent graduation rate for our students, and also that they're college or career-ready by graduation, so making sure that we offer opportunities. And then high tech, providing tools to staff and students, and developing, communicate a plan for use and support in the classroom, and then also the resources. And, you know, this year, we were able to provide a device for every student in our district. A lot of them are in the classroom and some we're going to try to get for high school. And we also added a full-time tech integrationist, so those all align there, but we'll continue to work on that plan. Goal two is effective school leadership to ensure highly effective schools. Here's where we talk about accountability and communication, chain of command, and staying within our roles, establishing goals and expectations. And again, I go back to assume positive intention. It really, I talked with the staff about that again. It really helps you to have good communication when you're understanding and listening to what someone else is saying. And it's not trying to be judgmental in a negative way, but when you assume that positive intention, you tend to take a little bit more of a, of a, of an open stance and non-defensive manner with that. Communication, keeping all of our stakeholders informed of school district issues, and fiscal responsibility, maintaining our fund balance and according with policy, prioritizing expenditures based upon determined needs by the school board. And also, this is where I added renewal of the ten-year operating levy. And then question two, increase to support student needs is something that we're, we want to get done here this fall. And then goal three, engage the community with the school district, communication, taking every opportunity to keep the district and our, our community informed, partnerships, and then provide great facilities for learning. So I did take off on here was develop the Facilities Committee of the Board, which we did. So I, I took that off, so. Overall, the only thing that's been added is the ten-year operating levy and removal of the Board Facility Committee, so. These are our goals, and I ask that the Board approve them. And this is what we'll use as our guide for twenty seventeen eighteen.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen goals? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Botts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wies. Any other discussion? Any questions? Any other questions? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the goals or approving the goals, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point six, Letter of Retirement from Lori DeShepper, paraprofessional. Do I have a motion to accept that retirement letter?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wies. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to add, you know, Mrs. Shepper worked for the district for twenty-one years, dedicated service, so thank you very much for that. And we'll make note to recognize her at the end of the year.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. Those in favor of accepting the letter of retirement from Lori, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point seven, Approval of Facilities Use Agreement with MinWest and Technical College. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Botts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Any discussion?
This is for the use of the shop out there for welding and woods. Correct?
Yep.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the Facilities Use Agreement with MinWest, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point eight, Approval to Advertise for Snow Removal Quotes for Two Thousand Seventeen Eighteen School Year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wies. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Tauber. Any discussion?
I'm pretty sure it's going to snow, but.
It'll be downer.
We only pay them every time they remove the snow. We only pay them every time they remove the snow, so.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving to advertise for snow removal quotes for the seventeen eighteen school year signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point nine, Approve Lease with Peace United Methodist Church. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Botts, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals, any discussion?
Both the Methodist Church and the City of Jasper leases for our preschool classrooms, so really appreciate them helping out with our space issues and I think we've made reasonable arrangements with them and so, look forward to partnering with them.
Is, is there any need to go beyond the end of the school year for the lease? That we would have to continue paying rent?
I don't believe so, once, and it is in there, that I think we can pay a prorated basis for days, like we only go into June for a week or two or whatever, but then after that, all of our other preschool stuff is in brown, I believe, through the summer. But like August, we were in there getting ready and so there's a number, there's a lot of stuff going on there, but, yeah, I don't, nothing for July, we shouldn't need to pay that.
So going into the end of August, it's just so that they can get in there then next fall, early and?
Get the classroom ready and, yeah.
Okay, if need be.
And if you ever started school early, you know, it just gives, it's kind of a year lease, but it is based on use also.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the lease with Peace United Methodist Church signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the lease with the City of Jasper?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Talbert? Any discussion on that? Any discussion? Any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the lease with the City of Jasper signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point eleven, Approval of Gifts to the School. Eight point eleven point one, Pipestone Vet Services Donation of two fifty to Community Ed Elementary Tackle Football Program. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Talbert, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wies, any discussion on that? Any discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the donation, which we thank them very much for that donation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Botts, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we're adjourned.
Ice cream time.
Ice cream time, five minute break. I brought ice cream treats.